It doesn't matter. Whoever preferences. Hey, we'll have it in a moment. I don't see anybody that's phoned in yet.
Bill, just for your, you got late. As I indicated to you when we spoke last week, once we identify that we have a quorum, I'm just going to address some procedural issues and give an overview of the comprehensive permit. There are people that, as you can imagine, there's all kinds of chatter in the community as to that, what we're doing, and it's not a public process. So I want to talk a little bit about timelines and why we're doing this. And then I will throw it over to you. You're in agreement, just nod your head or unmute yourself and say yes.
Or you're not listening. Yeah, you shouldn't have your audio and your phone on at the same time. Oh, you should be able to hear.
I'll call back in, but I have my phone on mute.
Okay. Yeah, I know.
Bill's still on mute.
Bill, you have to unmute yourself. There you go. Can you hear us, Bill?
Bill?
Landry? Does everyone else hear us?
Yes.
Yes.
Send him a message.
Send Bill a message.
My screen shows as muted.
Yeah.
All participants are unmuted.
Okay.
This is Andy Tights. I can hear you fine. I'm going to mute myself now.
Thank you. So it seems as if Bill Landry is the only person we can't hear.
You want to try with him?
Bill, can you hear us?
Where's my, Julie, I don't have my screen.
Want me to put something up for Bill?
Yes. Bill, phone home.
They can't hear you.
He's killing one because he has technical problems.
You can text with him directly.
Problem's on his end. Tell him to turn the volume up on his computer. Can you hear us now?
Bill?
Bill, you might have to log out and come back in.
I had to turn up my volume on my computer to be able to hear you.
So you can hear us now?
You bet.
Okay.
Well, we've been trying.
Oh, my gosh.
He's got himself on mute.
Can you hear us, Bill?
What was that?
He's off mute now.
Yeah.
Lou?
Bill, can you hear us?
Did you just text him?
Yeah. I sent him an email.
Mr. Chairman, this is Andy Tights. If you want us to go first while you're working out the problems with Bill, we'd be happy to do that.
I appreciate that, but in fairness to the community, we let them know that this matter was going first. So I already anticipate suffering the wrath of...
I agree with you.
Yeah, he's going to log back in now.
Can I call in?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
For God's sakes.
Call mine. Bill, for the fees that you're charging, you should get a better computer.
I got a brand new computer. They set it up for me earlier today. I don't know why I've got the audio as high as it goes. Could we do it by phone?
You're hearing it without, yeah, you're hearing it through my speaker. I guess we could. I mean, I don't think we have a choice.
Not sure why the, why the audio is not working. It's not muted. It's unmuted. Try it both ways.
Well, we're going to get started. Let me just see if we have any members of the public here. Whose phone number is 245-7342? Is that Rhonda? Okay.
Okay, so let's get started. For those of you that, and again, I think mostly everyone here is either the applicant and this application, the next one, or planning board members. But just to reiterate, for those that might be watching over YouTube, I know there's been a lot of chatter in the community about why are we having this meeting tonight in light of COVID-19. Couple reasons for that is that the governor's executive order with respect to open meetings did not reset the timelines for certain applications. The first application is for a comprehensive permit. Under the comprehensive permit, there are certain timelines that both the town and the applicant are obligated to meet. If in fact, Mr. Landry and his client decided not to do this pre-application, which they're not obligated to do right now, they could have filed an application tomorrow, and we would have asked to have this meeting. It would have to happen in 30 days, and we would be back to where we are right now. So with no sense of certainty as to what the future holds, the governor announced today what the guidelines are for reopening the state, but in the best case scenario, it seems that it would be maybe June or July before we could have meetings of 15 people. And that is not how it's going to work for any of us. So we are going to transition to a more advanced system of Zoom going forward, so that the public, we can treat these meetings more as a webinar, and it will allow more interaction. But tonight is just a concept review. There are no decisions that are going to be made tonight. There are no votes that are going to be taken tonight. Any comments that the public has submitted with respect to this project, whether they like it, they don't like it, will be made part of the record, and that will be shared with the applicant. And again, the appropriate time for public comment will be when there's an official application, if in fact, that is what Mr. Landry and his client want to do. Previously, for the board members, the solicitor's office provided some guidance as to what procedures we needed to take into consideration for approving a comprehensive permit. As well as what is required if we were to deny a comprehensive permit. Do any of the planning board members have any questions with respect to either the requirements for approval or the requirements for denial?
No.
No.
Okay, again, when you do speak, if you're a planning board member, I need you to say your name, your full name. So I think the best way I'm going to do this is I'm going to poll everyone. Brett Bodine?
Yes. I don't have any questions.
Jay Miller?
Yeah, my only question was if at the end of tonight's presentation, are we making any decisions about a preliminary review or technical review committee, or does that come when we have a formal application?
So forming the technical review committee would happen once an application is filed.
Okay, thank you.
Mike Gerhart?
I'm okay. Thank you very much.
Jim LaFers?
Well, I'll have questions on certain specifications of the plans, yes. If that's what you're asking.
I'm asking if you have any questions as to conditions for approval or denial.
Oh, no.
Tyler Dixon?
No, I do not.
Aaron Costa?
No questions at this time.
Andrea Giles?
No questions at this time.
Tim Patterson?
No questions.
Okay, hearing none? I'm going to... Mr. Landry, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay, Bob?
Yes.
Hey, thank you. Bob's accurately described the posture in which we're proceeding tonight. Pre-application, no decision. It's a very conceptual stage. Our application will likely be filed within the next couple of weeks or so. I believe that Michael Bisco and Tom Principi are also on the call. They are my client and our team engineers. I do expect to make the entire presentation here and to make it very concise, but I do have Tom available to answer any questions from an engineering perspective that I haven't covered. We are proceeding under the State Low and Moderate Income Housing Act, which is an act that allows certain not one-stop shopping treatment by the planning board. The planning board acts as if it had the same authority as any other board or commission in town, including the town council and the zoning board for that matter. It requires a letter of eligibility from Rhode Island Housing, which we have secured and provided to the planning department back April 3, I believe it was dated. And there's a requirement that at least 25% of the units in this development are deed restricted for households of low or moderate income housing. And those are households earning 80% or less of the area of median income. Now, we're not talking about low-income housing here. We wish that we could address more completely the towns' need for low-income housing. That's difficult for a for-profit developer to do. What we're proposing is workforce housing, persons who, again, earn $55,000, $60,000 a year or less is what that probably comes out to for the town of Warren. They would have to qualify for mortgages to purchase the for-sale units in the development, and they would have to be creditworthy to be able to rent the apartments. I don't, we've got a couple of slides of the project plans. Are we able to post those so that everyone can see them, beginning with the first slide? Maybe yes, maybe no. People seeing that now?
Working on it.
It's not essential, Bob. We can, I can...
Figure it out.
We, we, I would assume most of the people listening are generally familiar with the project site. We've got approximately 16 acres west of Kinnicket Avenue and north of Denver Avenue. It comprises three different lots. One of them is actually the private right-of-way that's known as Dallas Avenue, runs roughly right through the middle of this site from west to east, out onto Kinnicket Avenue. We are, southwest of us is a mixed type of area with a combination of single-family homes, and then the Kickemuet Reservoir is adjacent to us on the west, and a couple of blocks off in that direction, west and southwest is the, I believe it's Kickemuet Village, the low-income elderly apartments that have approximately 153 units. So there's no construction on the site now. A portion of the site was approved for four new building lots, the southeast corner of the parcel, beginning at Kinnicket, about 10,000 square foot lots, four lots. Those are not proposed to be modified as part of this development, those four lots, but that plan, as submitted, is proposed to be developed further. We're dealing with the rest of the land that was included on that plan. So our proposed conditions involve a mixed residential community consisting of both single-family homes and two apartment buildings. There'll be 12 new single-family homes at the, at the southern end of the, of the parcel, sort of right next to the four lots that were carved out most recently from this parcel. Those would be 12 new three-bedroom homes. Here we go, down at the bottom right-hand, the bottom right-hand quadrant of the site are those 12, the extreme southeast bottom right-hand corner of the site has three vacant lots there. Those are the four lots that were subdivided most recently out of this larger 16-acre parcel. The other 12 lots are above or north and west of those 12 single-family lots. Most of them are on lots of approximately 10,000 square feet. That's what they're proposed for. The lots furthest to the west or left toward the reservoir are much larger. There's 60,000 and 80,000 square foot lots. And then the northern part of the tract, or upper part of the tract, is proposed to consist of two multifamily dwelling buildings, an associated park.
Drainage facilities. Those buildings would accommodate 54 units. Again, they're four stories. They comprise about 21,600 square feet of area. That's 240 feet wide and 64 feet deep or so. And there are approximately 106 parking spaces per building. One, one has 106, the other has 108. And you can, the contours over to the west or near the reservoir, those are contours that show a proposed drainage area. There's another drainage area shown off on the east side of the property. Now, the unit, the precise unit mix of the apartments is still conceptual at this stage. It, it might change at some point during the more formal aspects of this process. But we're looking at a mix of one and two-bedroom units. Right now, we're showing 61-bedroom units and 48 two-bedroom units, but that could change based on what the needs are at the time this project goes to market, sometime down the road. And again, 25% of both the single-family residences and the apartments would be deed restricted to households with low or moderate income housing. And we'll show you a pictorial rendering of what each of these buildings would look like. That's the next or third, that's the last slide that we have to present.
Jay, are you able to put that one up? If not, I'll email it to you real quick. If not, I'll email it to you real quick.
The apartments are all garden-style apartments.
There you go.
All right. And while that's up, I'll just go through the other significant considerations. The, to boil it all down, the two most important things under the Low and Moderate Income Housing Act are, one, whether what's being proposed is consistent with the town's affordable housing plan, the housing element of its comprehensive plan. Secondly, whether what is being proposed is consistent with the local housing needs of the municipality. And we think that, we intend to demonstrate how we satisfy both of those as we proceed to further aspects in this hearing process. The town had a state-approved affordable housing plan as part of its 1991 comp plan. It was state-approved. That was before the Low and Moderate Income Housing Act was revised to require updated housing plans. And the town did adopt one of those locally in 2004, the year that the modified act was, was enacted. But it has not, was not approved by the state, but it was approved locally. And one of the aspects of that affordable housing plan was to identify potential sites for the development of moderate-income housing through multifamily development at high densities. There was a whole section of that plan that dealt with that. And this site is one of the sites that was specifically identified in that, in that affordable housing plan for development of multifamily housing at high densities. And one of the reasons for that, as described in the plan, was that this is one of only a few sites in the town that are available, that are undeveloped, that likely have access to water and sewer. And the, the plan sort of lamented that so much of the rest of the town, where there is undeveloped land, Tuition, for example, is either not accessed by utilities or is environmentally sensitive and wouldn't be suitable for higher-density multifamily development. And obviously, that continues to be the case now, some, some 16 years later or so. The Kickemuet Village, which isn't far from us, has 153 units. They have some studios there, they have one-bedrooms, and they have two-bedrooms. The comprehensive plan continues to recite that Warren depends very heavily on retail apartments as a housing source. And the housing, the affordable housing plan said that it had certain aspirations to find as goals and strategies. And I'll just read a couple for you. I don't want to go through all of them. One is, and I'm quoting, "to look to new multifamily development on vacant land." Another is to get to the 10% statewide goal of affordable housing units as a percentage of all housing units. To create local incentives to stimulate low- and moderate-income housing, to change zoning categories to permit targeted housing of type that I've described on lots like this, to continue to identify sites for the construction of new affordable development within the town, to offer density bonuses to do that, and to use internal subsidies as an incentive, permitting subsidies as an incentive to be able to create this type of housing. And I, I do note that back in 2004, when that affordable housing plan was established, it is certainly not been, and I would have criticism of the town. I obviously realize the constraints of trying to add significant affordable housing in a community that's substantially built out. But that, at that time, the how, the town had 4.6% of its housing that was affordable housing, 4.6%. And it had 225 affordable housing units. And it predicted that by trying to fulfill the objectives in that plan, that by 2020, where we are right now, the town will have added another 557 affordable units and achieved the 10% goal. And that, that has not happened. In fact, the town only has one more affordable unit today, in 2020, than it did in 2004. Only, only one of those 577 additional affording, affordable housing units has come online during that, during that time. And the need is there. The, to, the most current statistics issued by Rhode Island Office of Statewide Planning show that, that almost 41%, 40.9% of all households in Warren are cost burdened, quote-unquote, a defined term that means that they pay more than 30% of their income on housing. And that same report showed that almost 72%, 71.9% of all low- and moderate-income households in Warren, I'm sorry, are severely cost burdened, meaning that they pay more than 50% of their income on housing. So we certainly believe that we're presenting something both in type and volume that is and would meet a need in Warren in a way that it has not previously been met. With respect to utilities, we do expect Bristol County Water Authority to be able to deliver water to the site. We have a letter from them affirming that there's adequate volume and water pressure for a development of this size. We're also working with SUEZ on the sewer aspects. Our engineer has met with them, met with the fire chief. They're looking to have their consultants, Woodard and Curran, get on board to, before they issue any type of formal determination. But from our preliminary discussions with them, our review of Rhode Island D E M filings indicating capacity, we feel very comfortable that as this matter proceeds to more technical rounds, we'll be able to confirm concretely that there's more than enough sewer capacity to be able to serve the project. We've also had our wetlands delineated and verified by D E M so that we're comfortable with the wetland buffers that will be observed. There's a, there's a wetland complex of almost four acres, approximately four acres, at the southwest corner of the site. And because those wetland edges have been both delineated and verified, we're very comfortable that the areas of the site that we're proposing to improve, observe more than enough required buffers and setbacks from the wetland area. As this matter proceeds, you pass the master plan stage to the preliminary plan stage, we'll have much more concrete engineering about the drainage program. What you're looking at right now on this slide is conceptual drainage, which is what is, what will be required for the master plan stage. When we get to preliminary, there'll be hard, hard engineering with precise calculations to confirm the sizing of these detention areas and the, and the drainage program that we're proposing. And those permits for that stormwater management permits would, would be issued as part of that preliminary and final processes under the comprehensive permit. D E M will have to eventually issue a ripdies permit for the, for the stormwater and the wetlands impacts will be considered as part of that process as well. I did not mention earlier that there'll be a new public roadway going from east to west. It'll follow the Dallas Avenue right-of-way, approximately 40-foot private right-of-way. Right now, it has its own platinum lot number. That's proposed to be a public right-of-way. That runs right through the center of the proposed site, separates the single-family homes at the bottom of the site, south, southern part of the site, and the apartment buildings on the north end of the site, and will serve as access to both of those. There's also a, a proposed emergency access area right-of-way that runs north and south, right about the middle of the site, that would provide alternative emergency access to the apartment complexes in addition to the, the primary road access to Tickerman. So that's, that's our proposal in a nutshell. We'll have some traffic engineering, traffic estimates, capacity, traffic capacity analysis and volume analysis, at least at a conceptual level as part of the master plan presentation in coming months. And followed by more concrete road designs, again, as we proceed to the preliminary and final plan stages of the presentation. We look forward to presenting this and working with the town to move this project forward. I know it's been a while that the town has had, since the town has had something like this. The process is new and the type of project is new. And we look forward to working with you and moving it forward together. Tom Principi and I are both happy to answer any, any questions that you might have of us.
I just want to add for the planning board members that at such a time as it moves to an application being filed and we convene a technical review committee, we will also be bringing in engineering resources from the town side. That is going to be an obligation, the cost obligation is going to be on the applicant. But we have the ability under our ordinance to bring in, not that we don't trust their calculations, but we need to verify those. So just be aware that there'll be many more set of eyes looking at this as we move forward. I'm going to unmute everyone. If you have a question or comment, and I don't want to get in a prolonged conversation about this right now, but I do want to give you a chance to comment. I'm going to ask that you, if I can see your screen, raise your hand. I'll start with Mike Gerhart.
This is Mike Gerhart. I gather this is a mixture of condos and rental units?
I don't believe, I think they're all rental units at this point. The houses are for sale, the apartments are for rent.
Right.
Is that correct, though?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Recognize Aaron Costa?
Um, I don't have any questions at this time either.
Hey, is anyone else from the planning board? Jim Lefferts, let me see if I can unmute you or you unmute yourself.
Do you know what the fuel source will be for HVAC?
The question is, what type of fuel source are you going to be using for HVAC?
For HVAC? I'll let Tom Principi answer that. I'm not sure we've specifically discussed that.
I don't know that Tom is on the call. No, that is some.
Whether that's propane or, I, I'm not sure. I can't answer that right now. And I promise you an answer. I'll submit that in writing by email to Bob.
I couldn't tell from the plan, are there sidewalks that will be included that will go along the access road out to Kinnicutt?
Are there going to be sidewalks included?
We're not proposing sidewalks at this time. That would be a common driveway. That's a discussion we could have at the master plan stage.
Brad, did you have any question?
The owner came before us previously. The four lots that are, that are the southeastern end, those were approved based on the fact that that road they're now referring to was not clear, I think the title. Is that title now clear?
I'm not sure what title the, the, are we talking about Denver Avenue or Dallas Avenue?
Dallas Avenue.
No, we're confident that Dallas Avenue could serve as a public right-of-way.
I think the question is, did you clear all the title issues?
Yeah, we're not, I'm not aware of any title issues there. Those, that lot would not have served those four lots anyway. That's, I'm not sure how that came up, but we have no title issues with respect to Dallas Avenue.
I'm sorry, is Dallas? Ben? Unmute yourself. Okay, go ahead, Ben.
I'm for a solicitor for the town. Just regards to that, no doubt the town would rather investigate the status of Dallas Avenue due to that subdivision that you just spoke about. We will investigate exactly with the status of it as it stands.
My understanding, and then we, the owner came before, is that that's why there were only those four lots that were approved. And as part of that agreement, any further development would have to be credited on approval of the people who bought those lots. Given the fact that those lots haven't changed, it seems to me that that approval is no longer in place if you're.
Well, my client controls those four lots right now. Those are under the ownership and control of the applicant.
The town will certainly investigate whether or not there's any restrictions on Dallas Avenue and the status of it.
Jim Lefferts?
Yeah, Jim Lefferts, planning board. I assume there will be children living in some of the 108 units. Is there a play area for children being designed?
Yeah, that's something that, again, this is, yeah, this is very conceptual, but I, I do, I do understand that that's under consideration. The precise location has not been determined yet, but that is something that we do have in mind.
Okay, thank you.
Any, any else from the planning board have any questions? Jane, do you have any questions?
I do not right now.
Bob, I do. Yeah. So this is Andrea Giles. Though you say that it would be impractical to have 25% of this to be low-income housing instead of moderate, is it possible for it to be a mix, for there to be at least some low-income housing as a part of your plan?
Well, that's not being proposed right now. I, I, I'm not saying it's not impossible, but it's, it's not, it's not what we're proposing. It's very hard to do that without tax subsidies, tax credits, or the nonprofits are more capable of doing that because they score higher and get, and get greater subsidies than are available for the block of development.
So it's very, very difficult for.
I mean, I'm sure we could consider some that are lower than 80% of median, but we, we could not propose a substantial number of those without. but we could not propose a substantial number of those without adding further density for the market rate for the project.
Any other questions or comments from members of the planning board?
Did I get a response to the, the previous application versus this application?
So, Bill, the question is, is that, as the chair understands it, when the four lots were approved, there was a condition that any further development on the remaining land needed the consent of all of the property owners for those four lots. Your position, as I think I understood it was, that your client controls those four lots and could give that permission. And I think the question to the solicitor is, is that approval of those four lots now null and void because of the new plan coming forward? Is that correct?
We would certainly have to investigate exactly what type of conditions were placed on it. I understand at one point it was a paper street and there were certainly conditions placed in the final approval as subdivision. And we would certainly look into exactly this type of thing. And what conditions specifically are we talking about?
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay.
Related to that subdivision, there were, there was a serious disagreement on the part of your client with the town on, in the process of clearing those lots to take place. That ended up in a cease and desist order, didn't it, issue? That is how it concerned the planning board in light of the fact that we need to bring in good faith, and that good faith was not met by your client on that particular application. I just wanted you to be aware of that. I know you weren't representing your client at that time.
I am aware that that occurred.
Bill, are you aware of what the chair has raised?
I, I have heard that there were various disagreements during the older project. I don't know the details. I, I don't know what my client's response would be on that clearing issue. I do want to understand there was some conflict.
Quite simply, the issue was that the subdivision was approved and they had not submitted a soil and erosion plan, and they began to do earthwork. And when I contacted, I tried to contact Mr. Bisco Sr., he was unavailable. I reached his son, and his son's response to me was, it's their property, he'll do whatever insert word here they want. Then the building official went out there and got the same kind of pushback, and he then proceeded to issue a cease and desist order, which your client chose to ignore, which required us to have the police go out there, which did not deter your client and their activities either, which required us to file an injunction and go to court to get relief to get them to stop and file a soil and erosion permit. In fact, it got to a point where their former attorney came in with the cease and desist order and said that he had gotten this with client. And I think the second or third line of the cease and desist order says that if you remove that, it's, the penalty is a criminal offense. So I think what the chair is trying to say is that there's not an outstanding amount of goodwill towards your client going into this. You should be aware of that if you weren't.
Well, I'm, I'm aware of it now.
Yep. All right. Well, not hearing any more comments from the planning board, Bill. Thank you very much. I'm going to hang up on you, and we'll proceed accordingly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So we're going to just take a second now and let the Blount application folks get in. Apparently, we have an issue with the login numbers for people that want to be on Zoom. As people have contacted me, I've sent them the correct information, but I don't see that a lot of them have joined. We are taping and recording this meeting, so if someone does not have an opportunity to participate, they will have access to what was done. And again, this is a preliminary meeting. There are no votes. There are no decisions being taken tonight. Well, because they seem to be having some technical difficulties, I think doing the PowerPoint, I'll share a screen from your computer will be best when you get to that point. So with, I think, Andy, I'll get, I'll give it to you to kick off. Mike Gerhardt has to.
Thank you, yes. Yes. So this is Andy Tights, attorney for the applicant. And we have provided you with a large PowerPoint presentation, and I think if, if you could allow Paul to share his screen.
Yep.
So that he could put that up while you're doing that. Basically, I think, well, I think many of you, most of you are all familiar with Blount Shipyard before this started. And we also had a specific site visit, which seems like ages ago, before all the social distancing, and we had twenty or thirty people walking through the shipyard, but was only a little over a month ago. But we had a site visit with the planning, most of the planning board members and historic district commission members and many of the people from the neighborhood. And Blount's an industrial shipyard. They've been around for a long time. Many of you knew Luther Blount and his history of building boats, and the company's still there, and we're moving into a new generation. The background that's behind me and the others is one of Blount's boats servicing the wind turbines off of Block Island. So at this point, I think I'm going to turn it over to Marcia Blount and let her tell you a little bit about, more about that as far as the history. I know many of you heard it, but you've also got new people here, but she'll, so this will take a couple of minutes, not more than three or four minutes, to tell you about that. And then Paul will walk you through the presentation. So can we unmute Marcia?
Oh, am I unmuted?
Yep.
You're unmuted.
Okay.
Go.
Okay, well, I want to thank the committee for meeting in this new way. This is, we're getting used to all of this as well. And I, and I also want to thank, actually, Governor Raimondo for keeping Rhode Island manufacturers open. So we have been able to keep all of our employees working, which is a wonderful thing. We have contracts and we have work to do, and so everyone is fully employed at Blount Boats. Yeah, and progress on the offshore wind continues. And obviously, we look forward to building many more wind farm vessels in our expanded facilities. To date, we have built three hundred and seventy-two vessels. We design and build. We have an engineering department, you know, as well as about eight shops with extremely skilled employees, and we build all sorts of vessels, ferries, vehicle ferries, cruise ships. The wind farm vessels are just the latest type of design that we can build, that we're, and we obviously... So again, we're very versatile, and we have a very enviable position in the niche industry that boatbuilding is in the United States. We are well-known in, in the marine circles for building quality vessels.
This is Andy Tights again. Marcia, could you just take a moment to talk about your transition from steel vessels to aluminum vessels and what that means to how you build them?
Yes. So in the beginning, back in nineteen forty-nine, when Dad started the shipyard, there really weren't any covered spaces, and, and we built basically steel vessels. And as the years went by, because of competition, you know, and, and to be more versatile and be able to build on various vessels, we had, we went into aluminum. So currently, we build both types of vessels, but they're very different. Steel vessels can be built outside, and they can take the, the weather, whereas aluminum vessels really, aluminum really needs to be protected during the entire build process, and it's a much more difficult and softer metal to weld on. So for those reasons, you know, we need covered space. And the wind farm boats are aluminum catamarans.
Okay, thank you, Marcia. Paul, do you want to take them through the PowerPoint?
I'd be, I'd be glad to. This is Paul Atman. I'm a senior associate at Union Studio Architecture and Community Design. We worked before you as a pre-app in December, and we presented this master plan in December. We heard a lot of comments, and we got some good feedback, and we've been working diligently on our master plan submission, which will be doing so next week. The group felt that it would be good to do another pre-app for people, since the time has elapsed since December and a few new planning board members are present. In advance of that, in March, we had a site visit, open to the historic district commission, as well as the planning board members and the general public. We think it went very well. You, some of these images you've already seen, but I think this is a little bit more of a sequence of a presentation that we'll also cover in our master plan. Many people know where Blount Boats is in town. On the left here is Blount, Town of Warren. Blount Boats is on the Warren River on the west shores of town. On the right is the image aerial that shows a little bit more of the, the lot in relationship to Water Street, Bruce Hill Park, St. Mary's Church, the ball field, and the wastewater treatment plant, and then not far, Blount Seafoods. This here is a FEMA flood elevation map. You can see that the site is in a flood zone as much as...
Paul, we're not seeing anything except a screen yet with it.
Right.
We're not yet seeing anything.
That is a representation of a file.
Hmm. Okay. One moment, please. I'm seeing it, so I will close that.
You now got your cursor over the file name.
And you're not seeing the presentation?
No, we're just seeing the file name.
Just the file.
And your, and your, your drive. Oh, do you have two screens?
No, I only have one.
When I shared my screen earlier, I was able to select the specific file to show, not just my screen. So you may want to unshare and try sharing again and select that specific file.
Okay. Did that work?
There we go, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
See, you were, yeah, there we go, perfect.
Okay. So I, I think I will skip these slides, which I described in detail, the location of Blount Boats, the FEMA map, which, as you can see, most of the coast of Barrington and our side of Warren are in a flood zone of one sort or the other. These are the existing conditions from the streetscape, which I think people know very well. This here's Water Street with the offices of Blount Small Boat Adventures on the right, Blount Boats right next to it, in this two-story side of the building, and then the shipyard behind those both buildings into the south. This here's a, up close of the office buildings that we plan to improve. The lower left is a view of Water Street looking north. This here is the small, the south hull shop, the existing building, and on the front Water Street, and then on the backside is a view of this south hull shop. I, we wanted to quickly give you some ideas and examples of other shipyards that are in New England. One of the most famous ones is Bath Iron Works in Maine, which has been in existence for a long time in the center of town and has grown and has a very successful shipbuilding industry. And these are some images of their facility, right in this heart and the edge of town along the, the river. You can see this here on the lower right, some of the cranes and the equipment and the storage sheds and the shops, hull shops that they produce their big, large boats. Other examples in and around New England, Marina here on the upper slide just shows how the, the larger Marina buildings hug the street between the residential neighborhood and the water, and are still in context appropriate to the industry of boating and the life of town. The lower images are just more few historic and industrial images of showing scale, style, and material. Existing site, I'll walk you through very quickly because I think most people know the site and where it is, and if you had come to our site meeting, we walked through it. Here is Water Street. On the east side is an existing parking lot for Blount employees and a small, single-family house owned by Blount Boats. The couple of storage buildings on the north property line, the existing offices, as I mentioned before, the south hull shop right along Water Street, existing single-family residence. Then on the south side of the parcel, along the edge of the town beach, is a lay-down area and storage. To the west is a small, a couple of residences here and accessory dwellings. Along here is a cruise line support storage and the piers that the two cruise line boats tie up to. Recently, about four or five years ago, Blount Boats erected a telescoping tent. This here is the footprint when all the sections of the tent are, are telescoped in, and as it extends out toward the, the river's edge, the spillway and the rails, it allows them covered space for existing work to be done. The north hull shop is here. It's the largest of the, of the buildings, and it opens out to the lift dock, which Blount Boats uses very often to bring the boats in and out of the hull shop. And so the, you'll see in a few minutes how access from the, bringing boats in and out of the water is critical to their, their operation. The phase master plan, we've, we've divided it up into four phases, and each phase has some subcategories to it that would subsequently immediately follow once the sub-phase is completed. The first phase envisions improvement on Long Water Street and the south property line. Phase 1A consists of a new planting and vegetative buffer along the property line with the town beach and Water Street to shield some storage and accessory uses here. The, the existing residential will be also screened from the operations. And then along with that, this, the north part of the small hull shop will remain, but the lower part, which is a smaller twenty-five-foot story add-on and a steel structure, which we'll see in a few minutes, will be demolished. And this will be then rebuilt to the needs of their new catamaran boats. And this will be then rebuilt to the needs of their new catamaran boats. Phase 1B here is the renovation of the offices to give it more street appeal and do some updates for the building that are needed. And to really clean up and make a nice presence along Water Street and make it a better pedestrian experience as people walk to and from the town beach up to the north. Phase 2 is really directed toward the water. And this is where in Phase 2A, these two piers will be repaired and improved along the new bulkhead. And once, that is for the new travel lift, which you'll see in a few minutes. And then the Phase 2B is the infill of the spillway, which will not be needed once they have these piers built and reconstructed for the new travel lift. And what it does is it allows these circulation of larger, of their travel lift and their boats and their operations a little bit more freely in and around the site. This tent can always telescope back to create more space. In Phase 3, they'll return back to the bulkheads and this stone pier to really fix that and stabilize that for the cruise boat lines to, when they dock here. And eventually Phase 4, we envision another hull shop here with bay doors to the north that would allow access as boats are moved in and out as they are constructed and launched. The travel lift diagram is very clear. I think once these are, these piers are built that the travel lift, which is a large crane on wheels that picks up boats, you can see on the right-hand side, picks up boats out of the water and moves them on land to their necessary places for service. You can see that, how this plan really allows the travel lift operation to access new, the new portion of the South Hull Shop, the telescoping tent in the middle, and then eventually the large hull shop in Phase 4 down, many years down the road. This is a little bit more of a diagram than people at the planning board asked a little bit more information back in December. So what it looks like, what the height is. You can see here, this is the diagram, a technical drawing of the exact travel lift that Blount Boats will be purchasing and utilizing here at the new piers or the reconstructed piers and at the west end of the telescoping tent. Existing building heights, they vary on the site. I'll start with the tent itself. That's about 45 and a half feet at the tallest section. The North Hull Shop, which is existing, caps at 46 and a half feet. The existing South Hull Shop, which will remain, is at almost 30 feet. And then the small existing offices are about 28 feet. I wanted to point that out because if, when you start looking at the other buildings up and down Water Street, all the way up to the Torrester Mill, there's examples of some very large buildings that have various uses. The very, at the very north of town is the American Torrester building that we all know very well. I mean, that tops out at 60 feet to the clear story. And immediately in front of it is two-story, three-story multifamilies and small, single families right across Water Street in a very small neighborhood. And then down Water Street, there's all residences of various types. More immediate, closer is 2325, 327 Water Street at 40 feet to the ridge. And that, the Old Whale Blubber Factory is about the same. And then it's connected by another infill. Wastewater Treatment Plant is about 33 and a half feet. And then Blount Fine Foods is about 32 feet, right along, right on the sidewalk. The master plan Phase 1, and this is what I, is our first part of our application. So I will go through this very quickly because this is where we'll start talking about the architecture and materials and scale. This here is the existing plan of the South Hull Shop. It's about right here, if you can follow my cursor for the footprint. On this south side is a steel, open steel frame and then a shed roof here. And then the, this existing bay will remain. So all of this on the south side here will get demolished. On the right is the proposed floor plan, which is divided into 53 equal bays of 50 feet in width, approximately. Actually, I'm sorry, there'll be overall about 150, 50 and 35, I'm sorry. This here is a section of the proposed addition. On the left, you can see an example of an overhead crane, which Blount Boats needs to construct these very specific boats. You can see the catamaran hull here. So in section, you can see up to the top of the constructed aluminum hull, it's close to 35 or 38 feet. And the, one needs enough clearance here for people to stand on top to underneath the crane. And the crane itself has a height thickness. And so when you add that all together, your spring point for the roof structure is almost 45 feet. Everyone, I think on our team agrees that a pitch roof would be the most pleasant and most appropriate form and mass for this building. And it also provides an opportunity for Blount Boats to purchase and install solar panels on the south roof planes. Excuse me, I took some water. This here is, I'll walk you through the elevations very quickly. This here is the east elevation, right along Water Street. On the north side, on the right of your screen, is the existing hull shop that will get re-clad and renovated. And the newer part is on the south side and toward the back. And these two are small liner, we can call liner buildings, that are 15 feet deep that provide some accessory uses on the floor for the Blount Boats Manufacturing. And then toward the back is the two bays of the, of the new and taller hull shop.
Paul, what is the height, the height of the new buildings?
This here, the very height of the, the tallest height is 55 feet at the ridge.
Thank you.
This, we're working now on the south, south side. The shipyard lane is right in front, going east to west. We have a new barn door here, signage, a clear story window that wraps around the the southeast and north of the sides of the building to allow a natural light and ventilation. This here is the west side. And then finally, the north side that faces the offices. This here is the office building. On the upper left, you'll see what the existing condition is and what our proposal is, is to re-clad the building with clavards, new trim and new windows. The roofs are good, but also we're taking into consideration the materials that would be more complement the town of Warren, the historic district. These are examples of materials and windows. And up on the left, sort of steel frame structure with the clear story light and the tallest part of the South Hull Shop. And finally, this image here is a streetscape showing from the entire length from the south here at the South Property Line and the single-family house that will remain all the way up to the wastewater treatment plant. And then I'll leave it, I'll give it over to Andy for a moment to talk about the regulatory approval process.
Thank you, Paul. This is Andy Tights again. Can you hear me? Looks like someone with a 617 number needs to mute their, their phone. You're not seeing me, are you? Can you hear me? Okay. Okay, so if someone who's got 617, 78, there we go. All right, so now I should come back up on your thing. Well, anyway, I'll just talk anyway and hope that I look okay. So what you have here on the screen is a proposal for our process of how we're going. We are proposing to have amendments to the zoning ordinance to amend the waterfront overlay district to provide for this industrial shipyard project. It would be a land development project. It would go through the planning board process, very much like your other land development projects. We'd be there for master plan approval. As you saw, we'd have several phases. The next step would be going to the town council for asking for a public hearing on the zoning amendment. Then we come back to the planning commission. At that point, we'd be looking for preliminary plan for Phase 1. And then the other phases would be, we'd have the master plan, but we'd be coming back for each of those phases for the details. We also have, as you can see on the right, a couple of steps. We were lucky enough to receive a planning grant from Commerce RI. We were going to be meeting with the Warren Voluntary Historic District Commission before things got shut down with the virus. But hopefully now that we're up and doing things on Zoom, we'll get a meeting going with them again. And at some point in this process too, we will be before the Rhode Island Coastal Resources Management Council for the permitting of Phase 1. And of course, eventually the future phases there. I know there was, there were some questions that Bob had submitted and we'll, we can come back to them, but I'll cover the, one of them here while I'm doing this part. There was a question about why to allow this zoning change in perpetuity and be passed along to subsequent owners? Why couldn't you just limit it to Blount? Actually, that's not the way Rhode Island law works for zoning. Rhode Island zoning runs with the land, so you approve the use, not the particular applicant. And more to the point, I think this is good for, it's good for the Blount family and it's good for Warren to have the certainty that you're going to be able to preserve this industrial use and preserve these good paying jobs. If you just limited it and it could go away, then again, you've got the uncertainty. That's what we're hoping to have here is a degree of certainty for both the town and the industry here, so that both of us can know going forward. We've got a blueprint. We know where we're going and how we're going to get there.
Andy, I don't, Andy, I don't want to get into all the questions.
Okay.
People that have submitted them in email, they will be part of the record and we'll have access to them.
Okay. I think that concludes our formal presentation. I guess we're available for questions.
Paul, could you take down the PowerPoint, please? Thank you. I'm going to start with the planning board members and I'm going to go around as I see you, whether you have any questions or not, and starting with Jim Leffers.
I'll unmute. I'm fine. No questions.
Jim Patterson?
No questions at this time. I'm okay.
Tyler Dixon?
No questions at this time, thank you.
Red Bull Wine?
No questions, thank you.
Aaron Costa?
No questions, thank you.
Jane Miller?
I think I probably just missed it on the last slide, but can you just clarify the order of applications for both, both your, your application to the planning board as well as your application for the zoning ordinance amendment? Are those going to happen simultaneously?
Yes, this is Andy Tights. Yes, we would be filing, we'd be filing hopefully soon for, the state law requires if you require a land development project and you require other relief such as a zoning amendment, that it be done as a three-step process. So would we, we would be filing it all with the planning board initially and we would be having a public information meeting with the planning board on the master plan. And at the same time, asking the planning board for an advisory recommendation and finding of consistency with the comprehensive plan for the town council. Then step two would be going to the town council with the particular zoning amendment. And then step three would be coming back to the planning commission.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Andrea Giles?
No questions, thank you.
Fred Massey?
Just quickly, right now, the height of the building is 30 feet.
For those of you who hadn't been to Woodstock, that's what it was like.
We were all there.
On, on South Water Street, the height of the building, where the South Hull Shop is now, is the height of the buildings, 30?
I, I guess the question is, what is the height of the existing buildings where the South Hall Street is?
29 feet.
Yes, and then the steel framework is a little bit higher. The open steel framework is a little bit higher. But 30 feet for the hull shop and then the steel framework, yes.
Does the Solicitor's Office have any questions?
Just one question, is the applicant going to be seeking any zoning relief?
No, our intent is that we, other than the zoning amendment from the town council, we would not be seeking any relief. As indicated on that page, part of the amendments to the zoning that we would be asking for would be the, the height and the setbacks. And to clarify what has been in practice, that not needing side yard setbacks between the lots within one land development project or, or the rear lot with the water. So we would not have to seek any further relief. It would be up to the planning board to review, the planning commission to review the plan, but no zoning board relief.
Thank you.
And whoever is on with a 617 phone number, if you can identify yourself if you have a question. Okay, no questions. And just for the people that are watching on YouTube, if you've submitted questions there or you've submitted questions previously via email, those will all be made part of the record and will be addressed as we go forward in the public meeting. Jane, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just had two comments just for the actual application for when it's submitted. I think it might be helpful to have that, that, that streetscape elevation view that was towards the end of the presentation was really helpful to see the proposed. But if we could maybe just have some existing heights and building profiles showing up in the same graphic just to get a sense of what the differences are, I think would be helpful. And when the application is submitted, I think it would also be helpful to get a sense of, I guess, kind of more the construction plans. We're obviously looking at a long-term project that's going to have multiple applications. So I think it would be helpful to get a sense of, you know, what kind of, if there's anything changing with, you know, egress from the project, either during construction or permanently, or how that construction is going to happen so close to the actual street, just to have more details about how it's going to impact Water Street and neighbors. I don't think we need to go into that now, but just to get a sense of that when it comes in for more detail would be helpful.
Is there anybody else?
Any soundproofing intended for a new South Hull Shop, the one that was 50, 50, 35?
I'm, I'm sorry, what was the question?
Any attempts to mute, any sound that would come out of that?
Yes, this will, I mean, if you, you, you were in the, if you were in the old building for the site visit or whatnot, the old building. for the site visit or whatnot, the old building has a lot of openings in it. And the, definitely, it is the intent that the new building will be much tighter. Will have the doors, it's going to, obviously for energy efficiency as well, have tighter openings. And as you saw, the big doors for the construction, that's all facing towards the water, away from the street. We do have a door on the side, which would might be used occasionally for deliveries, getting in if you need, if we get a boat there, we need to get something around the front of the boat. But the intent is that almost all of the deliveries and materials will be coming in and out of those western doors on the building. And that it will definitely be, will it be 100% soundproof? No, but will it be much more containing of all the industrial sounds in the current building? Yes, great, thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions? So I want to just reiterate to everybody that is on YouTube, apologies for the technical difficulties if you weren't able to get in. Again, we're all trying to learn the new normal, our first time trying this. We'll get better at it as we go forward, but these were both preliminary. There was no votes taken, there were no decisions made. Your comments are entered into the record and they will be addressed at the proper time. And not hearing anymore, I think, entertain a motion from the planning board to adjourn.
Before, before you do that, could I just ask one question, which would be, and, and you know this as well, Bob, and not to decide tonight, but we would, I think we'd be amenable to and also request a special meeting?
It might make sense, since there's a lot of interest and particularly if we're still doing it by Zoom, we would request the board to consider a special meeting for our, our master plan presentation at our public information meeting.
I will, I, I think that's a good idea, but I will defer to the chair. Special meeting on board.
Sure. I, I hope, but I kind of doubt it, so.
I, I think when we go to the upgraded Zoom platform, this will be a little bit more streamlined and less painful.
All right.
Somebody on the planning board?
I move for adjournment.
Aaron Costa, planning board, on second. All in favor, raise your hand, say yes.
Hi, Andrea, hi.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.